For anybody who's here for something that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? No. Well, if you do wish to speak to something that's on the agenda when we get to it, please come here to the microphone because that's what brings the, what you say to FCTV listeners. Otherwise, they won't hear it. These microphones that we have that look as if they're going to amplify our voices don't do that. They also go to FCTV. But if you're going to speak, please go to the podium, please use the microphone, and introduce yourself and say what it is you're going to speak on. So when we get to it. Okay, first minutes, Paul.
Yeah, I recommend approval of minutes of April 25th, 2023. That's correct.
Is there a second? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And let's see, we have only five people here. Right. Did we know that John and Bob were not coming? Do we expect that?
We do not know that they're not coming.
Then they probably are coming.
To be here.
We could sort of drag things out.
Do we, do we have any special permits?
We don't have to vote, no. We'll be okay.
You don't have no two-thirds vote?
No.
Let's just keep going.
Yep. Okay, so we'll...
We can take action on special permits.
Yeah. All right, then we're going to go forward. And when the missing two members show up, they'll just take their places. The first item on our agenda is there are agendas, I think, near the door if you want to pick one up and follow along. The applicant is the 300 Committee Land Trust Incorporated, and the issue is a site plan review application for a change in use from a single-family dwelling to a philanthropic use that will necessitate more than two parking spaces at 13 Thomas B. Landers Road.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I spoke with planning staff and suggested we'd be more than happy to let the next applicant go first so we can take the 200, 300 committee issues back-to-back. So we'd be happy to offer that.
That would be helpful, really, rather than separating them?
No, I thought so.
Right, so if you would take your seat, we'll go forward to the one-lot subdivision first, and then come back to the issue that involves the 300 Committee in two things. So the next planning board decision is for David Zenga, a preliminary plan application to create a one-lot subdivision at Zero Beagle Lane. Who is speaking for that issue? Did anyone come to speak?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I recuse myself from this hearing.
Ah.
I'll wait.
Oh, okay. No one's going to speak forward on that?
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yeah.
If my may, Madam Chair. So as you may remember, at the last meeting, we, the planning staff, had reached out to the fire department to make sure that they had no issues with the preliminary plan as presented. They did give actual indication that they had no issues, so we just wanted to make the board aware of that. We did provide a draft motion for your consideration.
Yeah, we've got it here.
I don't know if anyone here in the audience who may want to speak to it. Now, keep in mind that preliminary plan is just a public meeting, so there wasn't an actual hearing that was open or needed to be closed. But you may want to just ask the public if you're so inclined, if anyone wants to make comment on it. But the draft motion is for your consideration.
Before you make comment on it, could you clarify where it is? I tried to look up Zero Beagle Lane and could see Beagle Lane, but I couldn't be sure. It appeared to be in the post office parking lot. That can't be right.
Between us and stuff, there's a difference between Beagle Lane and Beagle Lane.
Yeah?
People for cats.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with them. I'm trying to picture which lot.
It's kind of right across from the...
So Beagle Lane comes off of T-Ticket Highway, which is Route 28 over in this area, all the way down Beagle Lane, where a right-of-way comes off to the right. This is Lot 3, the lot in question, opposite of Sharon Avenue. And this is the preliminary plan for your consideration.
And where is people for cats on that?
Right here.
Yeah. Right, so it's beyond it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this application?
We'd like to know more about it. We're all from the street. Follow us here.
Oh, okay.
We're all from Beagle Lane.
Yeah.
Right.
We have concerns and questions.
Are you able to come to the microphone one at a time, give your name, and state your concern? And our town planner will give you an answer. I just found it.
My name is Raymond Williams, and I live on 14 Sharon Avenue, which goes off of Beagle And what I'm questioning is, the application says that it's a one-lot subdivision, and that looks like an awful big one-lot sub for, what's the purpose of this? Is it for a single dwelling house?
Yes, included in the application is a single-family dwelling. Yes.
What's the zoning requirement for lot size in that neighborhood?
I believe it's 45,000 square feet, but we can double-check that.
I think, I know, this is, how big is this lot? I'm just pointing it out.
Sixty-one thousand.
That's an acre and a half lot. So it's only, only one house to be built on?
Only one house can be built on that. And what about, what about the road and all? Widening the road and all? If this is going to be, you know, a one-lot subdivision, there's, there's several lots in through here, and are they going to be future lots too? And if they are, you know, it's a dirt road.
It is a dirt road. I think that we're not allowed to make decisions based on future developments, but just deal with the issue as it comes forward. So it would appear that this is within the current zoning. It's allowable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
So there's no requirement, if somebody wants to build on this lot here, that the road has to be widened or improved?
So perhaps I can provide a bit more context. So this subdivision plan, which you're seeing up on the screen, is a preliminary plan. If you're familiar with the Subdivision Control Act, it's actually a two-step process. There's a preliminary plan, which is sort of like a draft paper, if you will. That comes before the board. The board has some comments that they provide and findings that they provide and recommendations to the applicant. The applicant then can provide a definitive plan, which is essentially a final draft paper. That will come before the board, and there'll be another public hearing on the exact development type or the proposed plan here, which may or may not include some roadway improvements, drainage improvements, utilities, et cetera. That's what that process looks like, that second level, if you will, that definitive plan. Right now, we're in the initial stages where a preliminary idea has come before the board, and they've heard some improvements, which, as shown on the screen, is a 20-foot, I believe it's a 20-foot wide easement, or 24-foot wide easement, in the front of that property to facilitate any potential future roadway improvements along that lot itself. And that currently is the roadway improvement proposed by the applicant.
Well, well, from here, from this lot here, all the way up to Route 28, if two cars are coming towards each other, it's so narrow that somebody's got to pull over.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's my, my big question there. You know, what kind of improvements is going to be made here? That's all.
As of right now, the only improvements are to just allocate that easement area for the, for potential roadway widening in front of the proposed lot.
And is it, what is the, what is the possibility or what is the time that they plan to start developing on that?
So, sorry, in order for you to...
Yeah, I wonder if you could just stay by the FCTV mic?
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Question was?
My question is, if, when, are they planning to tell you can start developing on this lot?
Well, I think that's a question for the applicant, but as I said, this preliminary plan gets approved by the board, potentially this evening. The applicant has a window of time that they can file the next plan, the definitive plan. The board then has a certain amount of time to approve that plan with findings and conditions. After that process is complete, the applicant, subject to no appeal being filed, can then file for a building permit for the single-family home. That's roughly the two-month process, give or take. I believe the board has 90 days after the filing of the definitive plan to take action on that.
And this is a single, single-developing lot, right?
Correct.
But Jed, we were caught on something similar once before, not that long ago. Will we approve the lot with the clear understanding that it would be a single house? And then having obtained that approval for the lot, they were then eligible to apply for a 40B and put, I think it was four houses there.
Right.
Is this a pathway to that?
Well, as I said at the last hearing, 40B is always on the table, and it's something that the town really can't avoid unless, of course, you've met, you've met your statutory requirements of 10% of the year-run housing stock being affordable. 40B is always an option for a developer. In this certain case, it's a little bit different because they are doing a subdivision plan. That previous example that you were referring to was a little different. That was a determination of access, so the board was asked to determine whether or not that roadway met the certain criteria that you would like to see. You, as the board, have the ability to require this applicant or future applicants for future development along Beagle Lane through the subdivision control process to make improvements to the road. And that will be part of the definitive plan process.
The timing on that is the definitive plan?
Correct.
When we could bring up the issue of the road and what they're going to do with it, because it's a subdivision they're asking for.
Correct.
So that will come forward in the future if this owner goes forward with that.
And will the people that are in the area get notified of this?
Oh, yeah.
I was not. I was not notified.
None of us, I don't think any of us were.
Anyone within 300 feet of that subject property gets notified. You within 300 feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
None of us were notified.
One neighbor was. He's not here, but...
Is he, that one neighbor, I wonder if that one neighbor is, 300 feet is deceptive. I wonder if you're closer.
Pull up the GAS and hit the 300-foot Butters map and show everybody. It's real simple.
Let's see.
There's a software we have, they just put the lot, you show 300 feet, it does the mailing list, and everyone gets notified.
Okay, let's look.
It's the law.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, for preliminary plans, it's 100 feet.
But show them the whole thing anyway, so that when we do the next one, it will be 300.
Yeah, so our records indicate seven Butters were notified.
Yep. You can list the names if you want.
Yes, see, there's...
So Butters.
So all those people in green got a Butter.
So anyone in this purple area?
Purple area.
Because for preliminary plans, it's 100 feet, but when the, when it goes to definitive, the next step, anybody within 300 feet will get notified.
Melinda, could you, that's 100, change it to 300.
Okay.
Change it to 300 so they see.
Yep.
So we all see.
So then the difference is, all the people in purple will get notified next time when the definitive plan comes.
Those big lots push everybody away.
What's your name?
Kathy Breuer.
Is that on the list?
Yeah, just hold it. Hold on.
The house is across the street.
Kathy, yes.
300 feet of bluish color.
Yep.
What's her address? Or you don't actually have to say it out loud. We can check with you after if you'd like, or you can call the office tomorrow to make sure that we have the correct mailing address for you. Whatever's on file with the assessor's office is what we mail the notice to, so if for some reason...
Those are the names right there. Can you just show them who's going to be notified, see if they're on it?
So if for some reason you're, maybe there's a mix-up or something, but we'll, we'll try to figure it out for you. Okay?
Thank you.
Are there other concerns?
A lot, yeah.
Do you wish to speak to them, or should we move on? It sounds as if your concerns are going to be best met when we get a definitive plan. If we get a definitive plan.
Okay. My name's Jay Olivera. I own a house on 54 Beagle Lane and own a half a house on 10 Sharon Avenue. My grandfather built all those houses. We have people here that have lived there over 50 years, and we have a lot of concerns that this is a massive prop, this is a massive piece of land. This is equal to the whole street's worth of houses. So are they going to be putting up 40B there? Are they going to be making it much bigger? If, if it's, who, who is doing the developing? Is this just some family who bought land from someone in their family and wants to build a small house like we all do? Or is this a developer that's trying to make money and build something out here? That's what, that's our concern.
So the application that we have on file at the planning office indicates it's single-family dwelling.
And the applicant is David Zenga.
Okay. And, and is he a developer or just, is he just someone who bought the land?
He's sitting right there.
Oh. Okay, are you planning on?
On just a moment?
Okay.
Okay, you have to address us.
Okay.
And then if we are going to get...
Okay, it's my first meeting, I apologize.
I know, that's okay. We go through this all the time, but you address us, it's really very formal.
Yeah.
And then we, now we know where that they are.
I apologize.
We'll ask them to come forward, and it seems foolish, but these are the rules.
We're, we're a very family-oriented neighborhood. We take care of each other. Love to meet you guys, but our concern is that you're going to come in and use the property to develop it, put more houses down, make it rental properties, have Airbnbs, have 40B, anything like that. If it's a nice couple coming into the neighborhood, I don't think any of us have a problem with that, but our concerns are a bigger picture than just a single family coming in.
Thank you, I understand your concern. Mr. Zenga is the owner, would you like to reply?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. If you would give him, give Mr. Zenga the podium and the microphone. Thank you.
Sure. So first off, my wife and I are planning on building a single-family house on the property. At the original meeting that we met with, we stated at that point that we would be happy to sign a covenant or some type of agreement or make the approval for this property contingent upon single-family development. We have absolutely no plan to put 40Bs, 40B, I'm not even sure what 40Bs entail, but they're beyond our capacity, obviously. We're looking to build a single-family house for she and I to live in. We have no plans for renting Airbnb in our property. It just seemed to us that it was a nice spacious property. It seemed righteous to us that a single-family house on a lot that's at least one and a half, almost double the size of every other house in the neighborhood. It seemed like it made sense. As far as I'm concerned, I understand people's concerns about roadway improvements and all that stuff, but we can't afford, as single-family homeowners, to repave a whole road where a dozen houses already have...
We're happy with the road.
Let's try and learn the rules. It's not that hard. Mr. Zenga, thank you. I think that you have probably relieved the people who are about to be your neighbors. Jed, do you have any further information?
I do. If you indulge me for a minute?
What was it?
Nothing, I'm just watching. They don't know the rules.
They're trying.
They don't.
So as I mentioned at the last hearing, and just want to try to provide some context for why we're here, right? So you don't traditionally see a one-lot subdivision. That's sort of rare, because as many of us would imagine, a subdivision would imply a creation of multiple lots. Well, so this, this plan, as you can see up on the screen, was an approval-not-required plan, which was endorsed by the planning board, the Falmouth Planning Board, not you folks, but other folks who were sitting in your chairs, back in 1982. And on the plan, I'm going to just read out loud, they put this note, which says, and I'll just read it for the record one more time. "At a meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board held on January 5th, 1982, it was voted that approval under the subdivision control law was not required because a waiver of frontage was granted under Section 81R, MasterCard Law, Chapter 41. This endorsement and waiver was granted only because and, and subject to the terms and conditions of the covenant executed by Frank Figurito and dated January 7th, 1982, a copy of which instrument is made part of this plan and recorded herewith." So what it said was that these parcels, Parcells 1 through 7, including 5 and 6, cannot be used for any other purpose other than agricultural use unless the planning board approves a subdivision plan of land. Fast forward to today, subject property parcel 3 is looking, the applicant's looking to develop it as a single-family dwelling. Therefore, a subdivision plan of land is required in order to do that because that's a residential use, not an agricultural use. And that is why we're here, to talk about a preliminary plan, which is, as I mentioned, just the first step in the process. The second step, the definitive plan, we'll get into a lot more detail about the actual application itself.
Can I ask you a further question? Would, if, if this goes forward as they've asked on the preliminary plan, does, what impact does it have on the lots that are not within Mr. Zenga's concern, but the lots around it? Are they also now open to whatever? They are no longer agricultural?
Nope. They are still subject to that covenant. So this application is only concerning parcel number 3 or Lot 3 here, shown on the, on the plan. It has nothing to do with the other ones. So the other ones would have to come through the same process that Mr. Zenga, the applicant, is proposing for Lot Number 3.
Thank you. Okay, good. We can go forward. So it happens that we had anticipated at our last meeting that it would go forward, so we had asked to have a, a draft motion prepared, and it's here, and the board may or may not vote for it. We'll listen to it. Pat, you want to read it?
Sure. I move to approve the application for a preliminary subdivision plan of David Zenga under Article 3, Preliminary Plan, Chapter 305, Subdivision Regulations of the Town of Falmouth, for a plan entitled, Preliminary Plan Prepared for David Zenga, Lot Number 3, Beagle Lane, Assessor's Map 39-23-014-003, Falmouth Maps. Prepared by Jay Doyle Associates, dated March 10, 2023, a scale of 1 inch equals 40 feet with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant is applying to the planning board for a preliminary subdivision in accordance with Article 3 of Chapter 305, Subdivision Regulations, to develop one lot on Beagle Lane. The subject lot was part of a previously endorsed approval-not-required A&R plan and associated covenant from 1982 stating that it, along with Parcells 1 through 7 and Parcel A, were restricted to agricultural use. And in order to pursue residential or commercial uses, the planning board would need to approve a subdivision plan of land. The property contains 1.4 acres of vacant land on Beagle Lane, further described as Parcel 3 on the endorsed 1982 A&R plan. Beagle Lane is paved for the first 750 plus or minus feet and then turns into a dirt-traveled way until it terminates west of the property in question. The property is located in the Agricultural Bee zoning district in the coastal pond, Little Pond Overlay District. Recommendations: A list of waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land must be included as part of the definitive plan application. Two: Town water is available in Beagle Lane. Design and approval of the proposed water service will be subject to the Water Department. Three: The definitive plan must include the required drainage calculations, or any roadway improvements in all drainage designs will be reviewed by the Falmouth Engineering Division. Four: The road widening and easement and drainage easement as per plan should be in place at the time of the definitive plan application.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Would we take the recommendations as conditions?
So our understanding with a preliminary plan approval is that there aren't necessarily conditions. There are recommendations for that next phase, that definitive plan phase. And so your recommendations as included, as we talked about at the last meeting, were in the current preliminary plan, there are no roadway improvements. So in order for that to go forward in a definitive plan process, the applicant would need to submit a formal waiver of the requirements within our subdivision control rules and regulations. So those are the recommendations that you're making to the applicant as part of this motion, just as an example.
I, I think there's some people in the audience who weren't here the last time. They didn't hear about the, what's the plan they were showing, how much wider the lot's going to be, the, the area that was going to be an easement?
Yeah.
And for future road, that wasn't discussed with these folks. They don't know anything about it.
Okay, I think it was on the plan that was...
Yeah, but we just went over it so fast. I know they don't know.
It's true, we went fast. Maybe we could go back.
I don't think they know what we're talking about. Because it happened last meeting.
Sure.
If you could just show them the, how wide is that section we're talking about?
This, this area here, the applicant is proposing to essentially create an easement from the edge of Beagle Lane here into their property of 24 feet wide. This easement would be used for any future roadway widening improvements along Beagle Lane in front of their property alone. In addition to that, they've added this drainage easement area for the potential roadway improvements along that section of Beagle Lane, if required by the board during the definitive plan process. Other than that, there are no, at this time, proposed improvements to Beagle Lane as it is shown on the plan currently. Variable width, dirt paved, or private way, the applicant is not proposing any roadway improvements.
It's just making provisions for them for the future.
Correct.
Any questions from the board? Are you ready to vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in? Preliminary plan is approved. Thank you very much for being here to answer those questions. Yes, sir, come to the microphone.
Can we or I get copies of what we just discussed?
Here. Yes, you can. And other people can get a copy, I'm sure, by going to the planning office?
Absolutely.
Which is on the second floor of Town Hall on the opposite wing. You wish, you want more, you can have mine too.
We can get a copy from the...
I thought you could get that plan.
Yeah. And you can get your questions answered as they, as they come to your mind. Okay, now I think we're ready to move on to the 300 Committee business, and there are two pieces of business. The first business we'll take up is the site plan review application for a change in use from a single-family dwelling to a philanthropic use that will necessitate more than two parking spaces at 13 Thomas B. Landers Road. I'm speaking for the 300 Committee.
Good evening, Madam Chair. We were before you two weeks ago. I think, I don't think there was any information that was pending from us. I think we presented most of what we wanted to discuss, and I think the, I think you had asked town planner to prepare a positive motion, so I don't have much more to say. If you want to launch into the special permit stuff, I can do that as well now and then tackle both decisions hopefully at once, or any questions?
But let's take them in order. Let's just do this, and then we'll do that. But it happens that I was among the people who wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'll be glad to hear it again.
I actually had a hard time hearing what you were just saying. Believe it or not.
Just wait a minute, till they clear up.
I can go yell if you want.
Talk louder.
So, Ms. Harris, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to offer a brief recap of, of the first hearing, if you, if you'd like.
June?
Be happy to. So the 300 Committee, which is the town's, really, it's not a town organization, it's a private, private organization, but works closely with the town in order to preserve as much open space as possible, has purchased this property, the former Zelinski property, in order to be their philanthropic institution headquarters. They intend to use the space for office space, some storage for their stewardship materials, and really try to preserve sort of the beautiful agricultural nature of this existing property. They're not proposing to tear down and rebuild any of the buildings. They're going to utilize the existing buildings as they stand. There'll be some minor modifications to the interior, but they're not proposing anything to the exterior of the buildings at this point. But because of the change in use from a single-family dwelling to philanthropic offices, it does increase the parking requirement. We're not actually proposing to change the parking. What we're doing, because, because the, what we've shown on this plan exists today, what we've done is delineated where spaces could be on, on the existing gravel in order to show that we can accommodate the increase in parking based on the square footage of the building. But there's, again, there's no change to the building, it's just the change in use. So...
I wonder, because I'm familiar with the property and have toured it, and there's plenty of parking there.
There is. We're not, we're not proposing to change anything underground. What we've shown, done is show that the parking can be accommodated by specifically delineating the spots. We're not intending to lay it out. So, but, but we've shown that, that it does exist. There will be a small pavement area for the handicap parking. The rest is proposed to remain as gravel. We have submitted a request to the zoning board for an alternate parking surface as well. So, and as well as parking in the front yard, which is a special permit with this board.
It's the ZBA, not used at the planning board, it's the ZBA.
So we submitted the special, zoning board for alternate parking surface, as well as the special permit request pending before you after this for parking in the front yard. Because this is all front yard.
Thank you. Okay, so you did ask for the motion. We have the motion. Now we can go forward. Pat, you want to read it?
Sure.
One clerical thing, if I may, just before you get started, so they did file a waiver request for the landscaping requirements. I just want to make that part of the, of the record.
Okay.
Make sure that you, traditionally with a site plan review, if, if an applicant is requesting a waiver, you just vote that in, you approve that, and then you can consider the motion. At least that's been our past practice.
Do we have to though, because it's part of this? Says the applicant has submitted a waiver, and so if we vote this, we've approved the waiver.
Sure.
It appears.
We can do it that way as well.
Right. Okay, good. I just hope they're not going to touch those big arbividing.
We're going to leave as much of this alone as we can, because it's a beautiful site.
It is.
I move to approve the application of the 300 Committee land trusting for a change of use that will require more than two parking spaces at 13 Thomas B. Landers Road, 12.2 site plan review, with conditions. Findings: One, lot description and zoning for number 13 Thomas B. Landers Road, 129,164 square foot lot, 2.965 acres, Agricultural A, AGA zoning district, currently contains a 4,413 square foot structure with garage and gravel parking area in the front yard. Two, project description overall, redevelop the existing building with renovations to create an administration building with offices and meeting room and garage and storage spaces, providing 13 parking spaces. One will be a van accessible space. Three, project description, location. The building is located in the rear of the property entirely in the Agricultural A zoning district and will be accessed through a gravel driveway. Four, access and circulation. The proposed driveway appears to allow for safe, convenient, and efficient access and ingress to and from the property and circulation within the site, and the gravel parking appears to have adequate space for cars to turn around. Five, parking. The proposed site plan showing a total of 13 parking spaces with one van accessible space complies with the requirements of Section 240-14.1F, formerly Article 24 of the zoning bylaw. Six, landscaping. The applicant has submitted a waiver from the requirements of Section 240-14.3, formerly Section 240-108 of the zoning bylaw. Seven, site and building design. The proposed project is a good development with modest renovations to the property and will complement the existing character. Eight, other regulatory review. The applicant is seeking a special permit from the planning board for parking within a front yard pursuant to Section 240-14.1I-5B. The applicant is seeking a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 240-12.3B, request for alteration, modification, or change to a used variance. Nine, other. There is no change to the lot coverage by structure, while lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will increase from 3.86% to 5.82%. Ten, town departments review. The Town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments. Eleven, building code and zoning disclaimer. The planning board's review does not include building code and zoning review, and the board defers to the building commissioner. Twelve, conformity to zoning bylaw, other than landscape requirements, which the applicant has requested a waiver from. This applicant, application conforms to all the requirements in Section 240-12.2, formerly Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public right-of-way. Three, construction activities shall not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties or town right-of-way.
Do we have a second before we move to discussion?
Second.
Okay, and any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question.
Paul?
Under number two, it says, "Redevelop the existing building with renovations." When I was out there, it didn't look like it needed a lot of renovations, and renovations had already been done.
So there'll be some interior...
You keep the footprint and just do interior renovations?
There's no...
Or is it a major renovation?
No, there's no, there's, currently, there's no exterior renovations planned. What we're discussing is interior renovations in order to have the, basically to convert from single-family housing to office space. Nothing, nothing overly significant, but it, there are renovations forthcoming. None, none planned to the footprint of the building at this time.
Thank you. It's in good condition, and I can see we have to make a, an office area. But the way that was written implies you'll do a lot more work than...
No. What we're, what we're trying to do right now is interior renovations. To the extent we were seeking any, any exterior renovations, if a Triggott site plan review would be back here, but we're going to be subject to a special permit, special permit after this anyways. So any change would require modification of that special permit.
By the way, my dog loves to sight.
Lots, lots of space to run, and it's fenced, so...
He was in heaven.
With the understanding that this includes an approval of the waiver and the special permit, are you ready to vote?
Paul's dog's approval.
Most importantly.
No, it doesn't include the special permit right now.
It includes the landscape.
The landscape only, but we've got a special permit.
It's for the front yard. For the parking within the front yard is the special permit. To allow...
That's next.
The space. I thought it's included.
No.
Okay. All right, just the waiver of the landscape. All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you. Now, next.
Thank you.
For the parking spaces in the front of the building. Pat?
Okay, so we have a draft here. I move to approve the application of the 300 Committee land trusting to allow for parking located in the front yard of the property at 13 Thomas B. Landers Road under Section 240-14.1I-5B, with conditions. Findings: Specific to Section 240-240-14.1 of the zoning bylaw. One, lot description and zoning for number 13 Thomas B. Landers Road.
Madam Chair, I apologize.
What?
I, I just want to, I just want to make the board aware that you still need to open the hearing.
Oh.
So we haven't even opened the hearing to consider this application. I know it's part of the process, so we really should open the hearing.
You're right, it is a hearing, not just...
Close the hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
I waited long enough.
I could have waited till like she got to the end and then...
I was...
Oh, it was in the next envelope behind.
I took everything out of here. Well, let's open the hearing. Hearing is open on the matter of a special permit application to allow parking in the front yard at 13 Thomas B. Landers Road. And speaking in favor of that, we have Mr. Amend.
Mr. Clower.
Clower, sorry. Mr. Clower, anything you want to add?
Good evening. For the record, Kevin Clower. We've, we've gone over a lot of this, but just for the record, I'll state, we are representing 300 Committee Land Trust. They're intended to use this premises as offices for the philanthropic institution. We're requesting a special permit from this planning board under 14.1I-5B in order to allow for parking in the front yard, because as you can see, the lot is almost entirely front yard. It's a large lot, just shy of three acres. Proposed lot coverage by structure is only 3.55%. Proposed lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is only 5.82%, well below the 40% that's allowed by right. I think generally with a special permit application, the question is, is the proposal substantially more detrimental than, than what currently exists? This property has parking in the front yard as it exists today. We're not seeking to change that, and I certainly don't think that this proposal would be more detrimental than as it currently is situated. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have, though.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Paul's dog, you have any questions?
There will be a water bowl in the parking area, just outside the parking area.
Permanent.
Not in the parking area, that'd be bad.
In which case, Pat?
Okay, I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can Pat, the motion?
Just, just for the record, this notice was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on two dates, April 21st and April 28th, and 33 abutters were notified by regular mail.
And now the record's complete.
I hope that I don't have to interrupt again.
I would actually just, I, I would just suggest that you see if there's any public comment, because I don't think you've asked.
That's a fair point.
Public comment...
I just don't want...
Yep.
Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this application? Hearing none? No? Now?
Now.
Moving on.
Okay. I move to approve the application of the 300 Committee land trusting to allow for parking located in the front yard of the property at 13 Thomas B. Landers Road under Section 240-14.1I-5B, with conditions. Findings: Specific to Section 240-240-14.1 of the zoning bylaw. One, lot description and zoning for number 13 Thomas B. Landers Road. Do you want me to read this, because the name is the previous one?
No, I think you can go right on.
Okay. Project description, again, it goes into what's going on, so we've had that in the previous one. Number three is other. Let's see. No, we had that before too.
Yeah, we covered all that.
Okay, so findings: Specific to Section 240-12.1, special permit of the zoning bylaw. A, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. The planning board finds the size of the structure to be adequate. The Agricultural A zoning district allows 40% lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking, and the proposed use will be well below that threshold at 5.82% lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. B...
I think you can just read the titles.
Let's see. B is the suitability of the site for the proposed use. This was slightly different under A. C, impact on traffic flow and safety. Yeah, it's acceptable. D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. There will be no impact on the visual character. E, adequacy of methods of sewage disposal, source of water, and drainage. That's the same, there's no problem with that. F, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Adequate public services, there are utilities. G, the effect of the proposed project on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. Planning board finds no effect on the supply of affordable housing in town. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds the application for a special permit to allow parking in the front yard of the property will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, and that the proposal will not have adverse effects, which overbalances beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-2.1C of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public right-of-ways, and shall meet, excuse me, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. C, three, construction activity shall not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties or town right-of-way. Four, pursuant to Section 240-12.1I of the zoning bylaw, this special permit shall last three years from the date it is granted, if a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced except for good cause.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's such a nice use for that building. It's a beautiful building and a great site, so it's really, really good that this is going to be its future.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I, I don't want to speak too much. I suppose I am speaking on behalf of the 300 Committee, but I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I'm, I, I think it's a fantastic match, and it's a great use of that site, and just, it makes too much sense not to happen in some ways.
It's such a relief to hear that that was what was going to happen with that lot. It happens to, when I'm trying to cross town to get to the other side of town, I go by it all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And thought, oh, no, that could get ruined.
Yeah.
But it won't be. It won't be. It'll be great.
What's the schedule for 300 Committee to move out there?
Well, we have our special permit hearing with the zoning board at the end of this month. I think it's the 27th.
For the summer?
So, once that approval goes through and the appeal period's over, let's call that sometime in July. So, yeah, I think making it the headquarters sometime in the late summer, early fall is probably the most realistic.
Thank you.
I bet you're looking forward to it.
We are, yeah. Is it okay if I make a concluding comment? It's a thank you, really, that's, I don't have anything to add. Jessica Rittenour, Executive Director of the 300 Committee, and thank you. It's hard to be here and not share just our gratitude, the process, the staff, your focus of your review. This is a different type of initiative for the 300 Committee going through permitting. We're thrilled to be able to have a permanent home in Falmouth after 38 years conserving land, and this initiative is a major milestone for us, and we know we have additional permitting steps, but just appreciate your focus and professionalism. Thank you.
No, I hadn't looked at it from that perspective, because you're so embedded in the town as an institution, and I hadn't thought of it as you're needing a permanent home, but you really couldn't pick a better one. The, the whole surround of it, the inside feeling of the building, it's just really a terrific building, and the people who built it and owned it truly loved it, so it's going from loving hands to loving hands. It's, yeah, it's really great.
And we feel proud to be the caretakers of it going forward, and very unique structure, unique property. The setting is terrific and right near the Kuna Mesut River. What more could you ask for, for the 300 Committee, right? Near the Kuna Mesut Greenway. So it was a, it was, it's a good match, for sure.
You can bring back the bull.
What's that?
You can bring back the bull. That would be nice.
That would be very interesting. Yeah, caretaking for animals. I don't know about Paul's dog and the compatibility with the bull, but my puppy has not been there yet, so that's the next thing I have to do, is bring my dog.
You got a nice area for alpaca.
Yeah. Yeah. Good grazing. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have discussion items. Okay, the first one is a request for administrative approvals, Susan Perkins, 41 Sidewinder, Sidewinder Road, to administratively approve a minor modification to something we already approved to actually make it smaller.
That's right.
Right. Is there anything else to be said about this?
There's really not. You know, they went, she went for her building permit, filed some revised plans that actually had some more detailed measurements, and it ended up being a smaller accessory apartment. So, you know, to clean up the record, they've asked for, she's asked for an administrative approval, so.
Okay. Pat?
I move that we accept the applicant's request for administrative approval for the plan to make the dwelling smaller.
Can we have a second?
Accessory apartment. Accessory apartment.
All in favor of this? Aye. Yep, it's swiftly done, okay. Committee reports. Paul? You have a committee report?
I can.
Go ahead.
I pass.
Really? You don't want to talk about Shiverick Pond?
Okay, I can talk about that.
Yeah.
Uh, with the help of the town planner, there was a meeting a week ago Friday with DPW Conservation and, um, planning. And the Conservation Committee did approve the, uh...
Almost. They continued the hearing for the notice of intent.
Yeah, there's some administrative provenance to be done by DPW, by the town, but they approved that part of it, uh, on the sta, on the platform. Uh, there's an issue still on the park that has to be resolved with, uh, DPW, but it looks like it's moving forward, thanks to our town planner.
Do you want to speak anything about the platform or something?
Uh, so, currently, we're in the environmental permitting stage, um, so the platform itself and the plans that show the future kayak launch area were submitted to the Conservation Commission. Uh, they held the hearing on May third. A variance is required because of the size of, of the platform, so they continued the hearing, we filed a, um, a request for the variance, and so they'll be continuing that, I believe, at their next meeting, uh, which I believe is next week. But the commission seemed in full support of the project, so once it moves past the notice of intent, my understanding is that then our consultant will file a chapter ninety-one license, and that will take some time, um, and then once we're out of that, we're into normal pleas, potentially applying for a building permit and making our way through the process.
And getting a platform in there. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at it?
Yeah.
Shiverick's Pond, it's, a lot of work was done by the DPW, the si, the road, the sidewalk?
Oh, yeah.
The clearing up the lot, John?
CPC has helped fund it, so we, we did review it, so.
Which is really, really nice.
Several years ago.
How much money was put into that?
I have to look, I don't remember.
It could look more, is DPW done? Is this all they're gonna do to the, to the area to turn it into a park?
Well, it, it'd be contracted out to a contractor to do that work, and, and, um, Mrs. Drury is right, funding from CPC did come for the platform and the vista clearing, however, there's money also coming from, through the assistance of Dillon Landis, Department of Recreation and Conservation, I think, for, and that being applied to the park, so...
So more will be done to the appearance of the park?
And the town is planning on continuing the improvements to the category-based road, including a crossing for the bike path across Palmer Avenue, and that's scheduled to come up fairly soon, and they're gonna widen the, the area there. And, uh, I wrote to, uh, the, uh, commission, Cape Cod Commission, on the street behind it, because at one point in the public hearing, they said, nobody uses Dillonham Road Extension. And I objected, and I wrote to them saying that every child that goes to the school by vehicle uses that road twice a day, plus Mullen, Mullen Hall School, uh, parents queue in that area waiting for school to come out too, so it's a very important area, and the COVID is deteriorating, so that's moved up on the priority list of the Cape Cod Commission to number six, I think. But, uh, it's in the planning for the town, but I don't know the status of that right now, but that would complete the walkway on the north side of the pond. Now, as you know, on the east side of the pond, the Rotary Club has put in QR codes and posts, about a dozen posts there, on the environmental impact of the pond, and that's done in cooperation with the Mullen Hall School, so that's been completed already. And, uh, the other part of it is, for the last twenty-five or more years, Wacoit Bay has been working with the eighth grade students at Lawrence School, taking environmental studies, sampling and so forth, and they have a quite array of information, and I've been meeting with them, trying to see if they can come up with some kind of panels that the kids could talk about, what they've done as part of that process. So it's a, it, it's a very interesting program. And the last point I want to make, I was very pleased at the Conservation Commission meeting, to an individual, they all complimented the, the importance and the, uh, of the project. They were very, very complimentary, they really worked on it.
They should get some swan boats to go in there.
Yeah, I'd love the swan boats, but I, Paul, I'm just so thankful that you've really dogged this along, it was, it...
It's only about seven years?
Yeah, you've been at it a long time, and now there's a lot to show for it, so thank you, and the town.
It's not done yet. I was afraid I wouldn't live long enough to see it, but I may.
You're right.
Right, it's here, and here it is where the people at home can see it. Do you want to point out the areas that Paul was talking about?
Well, I'll, I'll do that real quick, so, um, this area right in here is where Paul was mentioning that the dock, the viewing platform, would be located, it's approximately in this area, it would be an L-shaped, uh, platform. Next to it is a potential future kayak launch, uh, we're still working through the design of that. That's part two of the Shiverick's Pond improvements. Part one was, um, vista clearing along, I believe, the southern edge, the eastern side to some degree, and then along this area on the western side of the pond. And then part three, Paul has alluded to, is this access park, which is located on this triangle here, uh, where the intent is to create some benches and some picnic tables, you know, places for people to essentially recreate near the pond and be able to see the pond from that area. And I, I turned on this, uh, resource buffer because, as we were just talking about, this is the jurisdictional boundary for the Cape, or for the Conservation Commission, and so as you can see, putting a dock into the water and doing any work within this area of the park will require us to go before the Conservation Commission, file a notice of intent, and to go through that public hearing process. So that's, that's where we're at for the dock project, which is located right here.
So for people, could you trace with your arrow for people walking around the pond, if they were to begin near the school, and walk, trying to get over, around the pond, over to where the new park will be, where would they walk?
So, as of right now, there's a sort of a, um, access point right in this location, I can zoom in a little bit. There's, um, the town's DPW, uh, has an access point to, uh, maintain the fields, and so you can walk along this point here, and then it becomes, you know, school property, and you can essentially go along the pond here and make your way up to the parking lot of the Lawrence School. Now, my understanding, and Paul has, you know, uh, reminded me of this, uh, several times, is that, you know, the original idea with the Shiverick's Pond project was to create not only the dock, the kayak launch, the park, but also this trail that went along the western side of the pond and connected formally to the Lawrence School. Because of, uh, funding issues with the CPC and, you know, just the contract that we had with our consultants, we, former planner, um, sort of thinned down that contract with the consultants, and so that, that trail is pushed out to a future phase, uh, but we will be bringing that forward at, at a...
But it's possible to walk where it will be, go through the parking lot, come up to the road, walk around the houses that are front on the pond, and find the path that's a completely developed path, uh...
Come down this way.
...where you are, and then come back around, uh, that east side of the pond.
That's right, that's right.
Right.
Yep.
And back out to Catherine Lee Bates, and along the new sidewalk on the pond side.
Correct.
Right.
So this is a brand-new sidewalk that was just done by our DPW, and Paul was, um, just talking about the future project for Catherine Lee Bates, which is coming off from that endpoint and running all the way down Catherine Lee Bates to Palmer Avenue.
Kind of an odd space for a kayak launch, though.
In this area?
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, it's a, it can be a busy road, you've got people offloading kayaks and carrying them. I would think, uh, it would be where they used to launch the sailboats behind, uh, Lawrence.
Where that set of stairs is?
Uh, yeah, they used to, they used to have a sailing program there.
It's very steep.
There is a stair there, and I've walked up and down them, but they're really steep. I wouldn't want to carry my kayak there.
I'd rather carry a kayak downstairs than on a busy street. I don't, I just don't think that's a good location for a kayak launch, having, launched many kayaks in my day.
Yeah.
And, and plus, you know, you launch a kayak, and then you just go park in the parking lot. Where are you gonna park when you, 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 on the, on the road?
Huge town parking lot.
Yes.
That area is, it's a town public parking.
Yeah.
That's, that's the bank.
Well, this, this is all leased by the town.
It's, it's just leased.
And then there's additional public spaces here.
But that parking lot's really full, the one behind Eastons, but the town parking lot, um, I think people haven't discovered it yet, and you, it's a walk across the street, uh, all flat land and down to the platform.
Yeah, and so one of the, so go ahead, Paul, I don't want to steal your thunder, this is your project.
I was gonna say, one of the problems with kayak launch became increasingly difficult and expensive because the intent was to make it handicapped accessible, which requires a structure, and you gotta take part of the structure out in the wintertime. DPW wasn't interested in doing that, and it became almost more expensive than the platform itself. It became a real complex thing, so that's in the approval for, for the, uh, Conservation Commission as a potential future access, but it was becoming impossible to do at this time. So that had to be taken out. But the intent was to have a walkway from downtown up to the parking areas, particularly in the summertime when people can park at Lawrence School and walk to downtown, because as you well know, we have a parking issue.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But the, the DPW, to their credit, uh, cleared two-thirds of that triangle parcel that was given to the town by the three hundred committee. The three hundred committee bought that and donated to the town with the proviso that it be used to develop Shiverick's Pond project.
It's been a lot of cooperation along the way, it's just been slow, but I think we should credit Vicki Lowell also for keeping the project alive when, um, you know, it hadn't really caught the interest yet, so, a lot of credit to people. Anyone else making a report? John, did you want to report on affordable housing at all, or on CPC? No?
Uh, maybe next time.
Okay, Pat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's Pat. Affordable, you, yes, affordable housing? Yeah, we're just waiting for the date of our next summit. And hopefully it will be much larger and much more successful. So, it's moving.
Yep, moving, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to mention, you know, because I wasn't thinking about it that quickly, but Jed might have something to report regarding the Mr. Codd application by Kimco at the Plaza.
Oh, really?
He might have something to...
I don't have anything concrete, but I can say that it sounds like the, uh, filing to your board, just like the AMP Solar project, will be coming in shortly, and you will be referring that to the Cape Cod Commission, so we anticipate a filing very soon. And that's for the, uh, Falmouth Plaza, um, apartment building.
What's a typical timeline once it gets to the Cape Cod Commission?
Our understanding is anywhere between six and eight months.
Yeah, I've been asked several times by different people for what impact would the Kimco project and the three hundred unit project off of Sandwich Road have on the town's, um, uh, safe harbor and freedom from forty B? Where does that put us? Where, where are we on getting to our ten percent?
Well, so, that's a difficult, uh, let me answer it directly. We're close, my understanding is we're approximately at eight percent, um, so that's good news. The bad news is that, as you know, the twenty twenty census was done approximately three years ago. We're finally just getting those, those numbers in, our understanding is by the end of the month, and so that will change the denominator in this calculation, and so we don't know where we'll stand by June, uh, because we don't know what that number's going to look like, and obviously, if that number goes higher, and our, um, affordable units remains the same, our percentage will decrease, so it's just a matter of time.
Jim?
Also, our housing production plan, if we reach, we get a two-year waiver if we reach, was it seventy units or?
That's seventy-six units is one year, um, and so double that for two years.
And so, what's Kim, the size of Kimco's?
Currently, what we understand is a hundred and forty-four rental units.
So, if we had another smaller one come in in the meantime, we could get a two-year waiver without even getting to the ten percent.
Is Paul's garage big enough to get to the...
That one's gone south, hasn't, that's what I heard.
Well, and so we're, it would depend on the window of time, so...
It's possible we could do it through the housing production plan and get a two-year window very quickly, if that's the point I wanted to bring up.
But none of this sounds quick.
Nothing is quick.
Glacial and speed and zoning, that's, Cape Cod Commission is, that's the step. We just bounce, that just bounces on our desk, right? It just comes here and it goes.
Correct.
So right, the situation is right now, it looks as if we're at or near eight percent.
Correct.
And if we get Kimco plus one other small one, we will have at least a safe harbor.
Again, it's all gonna depend, you're at eight percent, or roughly eight percent, with old census information. So the census will come in by the end of the month, that may change your percentage, which may put you further away from your ten or your, your safe harbor, depending on that, what that number looks like, plus your housing production plan is set to expire in December, so there's a lot of things happening in the housing environment, so...
Did you want to make a guess?
I do not.
Very smart.
That was smart. Yeah, that's good. Okay, because it, it's exciting to get that close and feel that we won't be threatened.
Potentially.
Yes, potentially. Maybe, I don't want to jinx it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does anybody know what's happening on Lantern Lane?
That's a court case, isn't it?
Yeah, correct.
Is it still tied up in the courts?
Yeah.
John, do you know about that?
I know about, I don't know if it's still in the court or not.
Ah.
I don't have any definitive information at this time.
It's my understanding that it's not in the courts.
It's not?
No, that's my understanding.
Then it's just...
But they ruled in favor of the developer.
Oh, they did?
I think a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, and he's doing nothing?
I think it was an appeal by an abutter, or an abutter brought, um, a case against it, that's my limited understanding, and so that's where it's been held up, it's an abutter issue, is my understanding.
But that was resolved?
That's what I was told.
In favor of the developer? And the town's effort to buy it is, is defunct?
If you'd like, we can, we can look into it, and we can report back at the next meeting, if you'd like.
It's important to look into it.
Sure.
The other project of interest is a development next to a Chinese restaurant in Main Street, where they're gonna convert that gas station into condos, and I don't know the status of that.
That's the one Jim was just alluding to that seems to have, um, withdrawn.
I, I heard that's fallen apart.
There may be a, an issue with, you know, I think everyone's, uh, having the same issue with, with building materials and the cost of construction, so...
Oh.
It may be, it may be that we, we not see that, but, you know, you never know, you never know.
Huh, well, it's a good blessing of not getting your hopes up. That's too bad, I enjoy hopes. So, planning committee department report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to make mention, I did receive an email, uh, yesterday, um, in relation to housing, uh, I'm just gonna read it off of this, but it is a, um, call to action, uh, it's a, I'm trying to just read it very quickly, it's a, essentially it's a free event for, um, local residents and the public, it will be happening on June seventh, so we'll make sure to have it in your next planning board packet, so that we can formally announce it to everyone, and we can have copies for everybody, uh, but essentially, it's, um, talking about the housing crisis, and many of the town staff, um, including the fire chief, um, the director of public works, the superintendent, will be guest speakers, talking about the impact of housing and the, the impact on the community, and so it's a forum to talk about the affordable housing crisis, uh, currently, and that will be held at the, um, Falmouth Library.
And who has sponsored it?
Uh, it's a, it's a joint effort between the Chamber of Commerce and Housing to Protect Cape Cod, is my understanding, that group, so there'll be quite a bit of discussion about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any business before the planning department that we should know about now?
Well, the only other thing I have is our recodification working group is set to meet at the end of this month, and will be discussing more on Article Ten, our non-conforming , uh, items, but also, um, the conversion by law, if you folks have comments that you would like the working group to consider, perhaps at the next planning board meeting, which I believe is the twenty-third, um, the day before our recodification working group meeting, if you could have those comments to us, and we can forward them to the group, uh, for discussion, that would be something that we could potentially move forward for November on.
The group discussed, um, changing the name of the group, because it's not recodification.
Right.
This is the one where we're considering changes, and that, people should realize that, so if they have changes they'd like to have considered, they know that now is the time to be bringing that to the attention of the planning department, which is accumulating that information.
What's it gonna be called?
I have a question on that.
That, the conversation didn't go that far.
Is there going to be a time that will, on the planning, on our agenda, that we'll be able to bring up issues with the bylaw changes and corrections, getting ready for next town meeting? Do we have an agenda? I'd like to make sure, I was going to do an agenda items, but it sounds like we're talking about it now.
Oh, only because it's something that's, that's underway. But as an agenda item, we really ought to bring it up so that we're ready for it.
Right. I would like, I'm going to formally request that we have an agenda item so that not only myself, but other people that have issues, we can bring them all in at that time and move them forward.
And you specifically want to narrow it down to things that are possible for the fall? Is that what you said?
Yeah, yes, it could be. That'd be great. But I, I want to say that I believe that there's issues that the recodification has created that need to be fixed. And I want to have an agenda that we can bring those forward at that time. Whether or not we can do them in one year, two years, I'm not-
It'd be nice if we could do them in November.
It would be nice if we could do them all at one time.
So let's have that on for the next agenda.
But I wanted to have, have a timeframe where we can be prepared to bring those forward and then decide what we want to do.
Okay, the group has some things that just-
Who's the group?
Oh, the group is more or less what it has been all along. So that it's, the planning department is the, is staffing it. The ZBA has a representative, the, so Noreen is there, the building commissioner. Pat and myself.
Two members of the ZBA.
Yeah, and ZBA representatives who changed somehow. Although we now have, the newest member on the ZBA is their representative for this.
Yes. So the two members from the ZBA, they reorganized because of elections and whatnot. So we have Frank Duffy, who used to be town council's representative, who is now the ZBA's representative.
That's right. Frank's there for ZBA. He was there before as town council. So he's a continuing member.
Right. And then Scott Peterson, who's-
And we picked up a new lawyer. And the two consultants.
Right. And our associate town council, which I believe you're, you're referring to, Brian Tobin. He, he joins the group. So it's, it's a good, it's a good-sized group. And so there's, there's some, some very good conversation currently happening about Article 10, which is the non-conforming section, which is the new potential bylaw that our consultants had drafted about a year ago. Long story.
I was saying, we're going to have a planning board agenda to discuss these items and other things.
To discuss all of that, right.
Yeah, that's, I just want to know that's coming, and when it is.
For our next meeting.
Sure.
For our next meeting?
Yep.
Great.
That'd be great. Okay, because it could take more than one meeting.
Because I have some other things we'll bring up at this time, too, so.
That sounds good.
Okay. Any, well, announcements? No? General correspondence? No? Future agenda items? Are there any others that you'd like to have brought up? Paul?
Yeah, I got a couple. One is, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the possibility of getting a table of, of the solar panels in town. And I provided an outline of a table of thoughts of what I have. Is that something we can put on the agenda and talk about when you're available?
Sure, Ken.
To be able to do that?
Yeah, we should be able to put that on the next agenda item.
Because there's a lot, a lot of them going on, although with the extent of it.
Right, and just see where they are.
Jim started first one on the solar, on the whole landfill.
That was a long time ago now, huh?
Yeah.
But there's been a lot since then. How many?
Four.
Well, it's got to be more than that. Just drive down 151. Every week, there's another one going up.
That's all one project.
Okay. The other thing is, on announcement, don't forget to vote on Tuesday, even though some of the people on this board are not at risk.
Right, we're all here.
There's three people up for reelection, and there's no, nobody's opposing them, so I guess they're pretty good.
This is good. I'm glad.
Always a right-in candidate, always.
What?
Right-in candidate out there somewhere.
There is?
Never know.
You're sowing fear there.
The last thing I was going to mention, some time ago, we talked about getting Tom Farani from Mashpee Commons to come in and talk to us about what the development they're doing, what they've done. And it might be nice to try to do that maybe later this year.
Maybe later in the year? Because I have an issue. I would, I don't know that the next agenda is quite the time for it. I've brought it up before. I know that the, on Board of Selectmen intermittently have mentioned it. And this is thinking about regulating short-term rentals. And we have so many different constituencies for short-term rentals here in town, and different needs around that. And yet, I keep reading in the national press and in magazines for development about the change in that industry, that now the private equity people have noticed that short-term rentals, AKA Airbnb-style things, are big moneymakers. And they're buying up streets full of houses and turning them into short-term rental neighborhoods. And even if it's not a whole neighborhood, it's just throughout a neighborhood. It creates a lot of problems, and it changes the character of our town. But what it really does, if, if this is a business, it's an absolute violation of our current zoning, which is predominantly residential, not business. So how does all this work together?
Just came up in Sandwich, so you should look into Sandwich.
Yes. And they're looking at it on the outer Cape, anywhere that are resort communities where there's a huge appetite for short-term rentals. So the, we, I think the town needs to get ahead of it. I spoke with the assistant town planner at that time, the interim town, town manager, I mean, the interim town manager, but, and Jed had said that a group of town employees, heads of various departments, are getting together around this. So something is brewing, and surely it ought to be a joint study effort rather than individual pockets studying it. And how can we put that together?
Yeah, I was just looking at my phone, trying to remember the date that we appeared before the select board. I wanted to say it was April 1st. And by we, I mean myself, associate town council, Brian Tobin, and our town council, Maura O'Keefe, to provide to them essentially a status update. Where are we currently? My role in that presentation was to say, you know, what does the zoning bylaw say? What do we know about short-term rentals? And then Brian and Maura covered the legal end of it, to give the boards, or the select board, more information about what have other towns done? How have they handled them? It's sort of a policy decision that the select board has to make, and then direct town staff to essentially follow that policy. You know, do we want to regulate them in this way versus this way? Do we just want to do hands-off? It's really up to the select board to, to decide on how they want to handle that.
Or have we already handled it? If they are in fact recognized as a business, they can't be in residential areas.
I have a question.
Or under what terms would they be?
When we, when we're talking about this, are we, traditionally, Falmouth's had a very large summer, weekly summer rental market. It's gone on for a hundred years. And I don't think we should change that. I don't, I understand what you're getting at, but is it possible that what we're talking about could be changing that, too? Because in the real estate business, hundreds of times you sell a house to somebody, the typical model is, they can't quite afford it. But they figure they can rent it for two, two weeks, or three weeks, and they, they partially do it. And they, and they do it, and eventually they stop doing it, and they, that's how they get their house. Are we saying they can't do that anymore because that's now a business?
At the moment, all we're saying is-
I'm just concerned that that could-
This area is changing, and we need to look at that.
But that's also part of our tradition of our town. It's been there for a long time. So we just need to be careful. We're trying to, this Airbnb thing, which I think is a whole nother animal, but we, we always have had a traditional summer rentals, I mean, since I was a kid, rent a house.
And we all know it. We all know it, and most of us take advantage of it.
It wasn't a business. It was, it was people's single-family homes. It's how they could afford their house because they could rent it out for a few weeks. It wasn't a, a corporate business. It were individual family people.
But at some point, it crosses the line, and I think this is a discussion of-
As long as we don't kill the other side, too.
Where is the line? No, you have to be careful. And many towns have grappled with this. John?
So the examples that you're talking about, where are the buy-up whole neighborhoods? Are these already built neighborhoods, or are these new home neighborhoods?
They're both. Your examples are both.
Because a lot of Wall Street companies are buying whole developments in Arizona and Texas, but they're not for summer rentals. They're for year-round rentals. So I'm not saying it's not happening in North Carolina or Virginia or somewhere, but I would, I would want to know, are they buying up, like, all the mare vista that's already built out and owned? Or are they buying up 200-unit developments that somebody's going to do that hasn't been built yet? There is a, there is, like Jim is saying, there's a fabric here of, of, it's a, it's a business of renting your house out.
Absolutely.
But also living there.
Absolutely. There's a lot of research that needs to be done to find out what are the instances? What are the interests, and what are the needs, so that we don't make a mess of things?
And to make it, to make it viable for a big company, it has to be a lot of units.
As an example, we finished selling out Kendall Lane to 28 individual property owners. There's no corporation, but a lot of them are going to do summer rentals.
Yep.
Because that's how they're going to afford their house. I would hate to shut that down if we go too far on, on trying to regulate whatever this Airbnb-
Well, as time passes and, and a group is put together, you might want to volunteer for it.
Well, I, I think that the, the realtors will be want to be part of it.
Oh, sure.
If, if, if in fact, it's going to be a balance to, to solve that problem. You got to do it, be careful.
So for those of you who are interested and for the public's knowledge, that meeting was April 1st, and it was videotaped by FCTV, the wonderful folks there. So you can go to the FCTV website or to the FCTV YouTube channel, and you can search out that meeting, April 1st, the select board event. It was a workshop event, and they recorded the whole session and the presentation that we provided.
Yeah, and it was a good one.
Just one, another question, please.
Yes.
Jed, you mentioned earlier about a housing summit coming up in Falmouth.
Yeah.
Are there any speakers from Falmouth on that agenda?
Oh, yeah. There's, as I mentioned, the, the fire chief will be on a guest panel, my understanding. The director of public works, the school superintendent. The guest speakers, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find it in my email now. I don't, one second. So our guest speakers are Alyssa Magnota, the CEO of Housing Assistance, Tucker Holland, the municipal housing director of Nantucket, and Leslie Sandberg, the select board member from Provincetown. And it's, I'll just read the flyers just for everyone's understanding. It says, "Learn how it impacts local businesses. Hear what other towns and community leaders are doing to create more housing, and share your housing ideas and stories." And I think the idea is to, you know, put every idea on the table and hear about how it impacts all the communities, the communities on Cape Cod.
When is this?
This is June 7th. That's a Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. So again-
It's going to be the Herman Room?
Herman Room, yep. So we'll make sure we print this for your next meeting packet.
Paul?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Get out of here.
Thank you, Paul.